Thank you. It's calls to order our June Safe Schools Meeting virtually once again. And today we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance, please. Give the flag, Mr. Ulmer. Or Gilmer, sorry. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the country for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That new flag, Mr. Gilmer?
I tried to mix it up a little bit, yes.
Just proven we try to pay attention, so.
Very good.
Excellent. Okay. That will move to approval of the minutes for May 27, 2020 Safe Schools Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the minutes? All right. Minutes are approved. Thank you. As an opportunity for public comment, I will not read this unless we have public that is going to comment. Are there any participants who would like to comment, Mr. Gilmer?
We have two people in the attendee room. I know one's an employee monitoring tonight and the other is Mr. Sokol. Mr. Sokol, is there any public comment? You would raise your hand. Otherwise, those are the only two folks that are in the attendee room tonight, so far.
All right.
No hands.
One day, Mr. Sokol. I can't wait. I don't know when that day will be. But we'll be here for you. Thank you for attending, Mr. Sokol. It's very much appreciated. So we do not have any other, jumping ahead already to other business. So there will be an opportunity for public comments towards the end of this meeting. With that, we'll start, Mr. Dur, with informational items, please.
Great, thank you. Our informational item this evening focuses on the annual report to the Board of Directors. So just to summarize, the, obviously, the folks on the board have heard this before, but just to summarize for any members of the public in attendance, the purpose of the report, it's a requirement of the Safe Schools Coordinator of every school entity in the Commonwealth to make a report to their Board of Directors annually on the topic of safe schools. And unfortunately, that's as detailed as it gets when it talks about the contents of the report. So it's sort of left open to each coordinator to come up with what they believe their board needs to hear. I delivered that report on the 18th of June in executive session because we do talk about some things that are private or privileged and confidential. But I did feel that it was important to also present a public version of that report here in committee so that, you know, we can be held accountable to a certain extent. And really, my whole vision for this report really is just to take a snapshot in time to encapsulate the last year and to serve as a jumping off point as we move forward. So any comments, questions, discussion that this report generates, and it's by no means all a handbook on school safety, but any input that this generates really is valuable to us as we tailor our way moving forward. So that's my style and my approach when I think about writing this report. I'm not going to go through line by line because, as I mentioned, that was done already with the board in executive session and the members of the committee were in attendance. It is attached to the agenda here this evening for any members of the public that would like to review it. And I'll also post it on the website following this meeting so that it's there for others that would like to to see it as well. And I invite, like I said, any feedback to the committee here or to me directly if anyone so chooses. I'll summarize the report to say thematically, I think, here at North Penn, our style with school safety differs a little bit from some of the other school districts in the Commonwealth when it comes to being more thoughtful than some see, observe, react type security. We're, we've been for a long time, and Mr. Casa can attest to this, thinking holistically in our approach and acting deliberately when we move forward to put things into place. Thematically throughout the report, you'll see references to things like trauma-informed, to school climate, to violence prevention, relationships, outreach, and of course, students. And that's really the underpinning of everything that we do. School safety is so intrinsically tied and interwoven with so many other things in the school system that it's, it's, it's really difficult to present a comprehensive summary of what school safety is, other than to say that we must continue to work with those things in mind as we move forward. And really, prevention is key. As we craft our Safe Schools program, it has to be more than crafting a school system that looks safe or appears safe or does things that seem safe. It has to be a school system that feels safe to the kids that come to us every day, no matter where they come from. That's really the goal when I think about school safety. That's interwoven with everything that we do. If we look at it just at a lens of security, it's interwoven with how we hire. It's interwoven with how we train our security officers, how we do our threat assessments, how we train our staff to respond to emergencies, how we engage our community, and how we evaluate ourselves in the job that we're doing. All of those things are integral as we form this the Safe Schools program. And again, I'm just, just to reiterate, it's more than just what appears safe. It's all those things that we need to do to make sure that the kids, then the staff, and the community that sends their kids feel safe when they're at North Penn. So that, that's the lens I tried to take through this report. And then just right at the end, to acknowledge the fact that we're in uncharted territory, as Dr. Dietrich has said so many times, very challenging as we move forward with the COVID-19 and the pandemic considerations, but we have to remain mindful of school safety. What does that look like as we move forward? And our teams have been working nonstop on those answers. So I'll open it up, Mr. Chairman, to any comments that you have or questions that we can answer in this forum about the report. You're muted.
I'm off my game. All right, thanks. I appreciate the report being made public and especially the caveat that it is a living, breathing document that I hope reflects each year our continuous improvement as a school district and what the Safe Schools Committee is trying to attain each year. We need to stretch ourselves each time. And so I appreciate, Mr. Dur, your leadership and openness to the reflective type of leadership that listens and that your staff understands that the vision we have, you know, from this committee is about engagement and not simply enforcement. And I've been happy with some of the gains we've made with that. Think in the, the year moving forward, we're going to begin to tighten up some of our policies and practices along with data collection. And that's where we will work hand in glove with policy, with education, community, and instruction to make sure that we continue to reflect those, the goals of the community to engage. You know, at the basis of my philosophy as a professional who's been dedicated to educational safety and security for well over a decade, it's that, and this is borne out in a United States Secret Service and U.S. Department of Education report on school shootings and tragedies as well as averted ones, is that the basis of it all is communication. And if we have good communication and a trust between the community and the student body and those in the school district, then we'll get information that can be acted upon proactively to prevent any tragedies or to help students and others who may be in need. And what we learned, though, is that the research has shown that same Secret Service and U.S. Department of Education research was able to prove that tragedy wasn't averted when that communication broke down. When there's not a trust, when there aren't multiple paths of communication for important information to be shared, that is actually when the risk of a tragedy occurring increases. And so if we keep that in mind moving forward and for this committee, as we commit ourselves to another year of improvement and learning what we can do to serve, you know, the stakeholders of North Penn, I think we'll be well-served. With that, I'll have some other ideas and questions, you know, as we move through some of this report, but I'd like to defer now to my fellow committee colleagues.
I'd like to add that I echo the sentiments of Mr. Casa. I thank Mr. Dur for what you presented to us, and I like the lens through which you look as you planned your documents, because it's also been proven that if students don't feel safe, no matter where they come from and coming to school, then they ultimately end up dropping out and they leave that environment. So those plans that you've put into place would also ensure that students will want to come to school and being that they feel.
Did we lose? Dr. Lewis Campbell, are you there? Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell. We lost your last closing sentence or two there.
Oh. I was just grateful that you heard what I said about students leaving when they didn't feel safe. They end up quitting and dropping out, and that's the last thing we want to say, see. So I wanted to thank Mr. Dur for being at the helm, ensuring those things he mentioned will be looked at, because it goes way beyond just safety. It goes into, as you said, who you hire and all those other initiatives that you spoke about. So I just wanted to thank you for putting that thought into place as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so Mr. Casa, also thank you for your comments. And Mr. Dur, thank you for the detailed report. And several of us went to the Pride March Parade in Lansdale yesterday, and there was a number of youth there. And so it just brought back the need for inclusion with different, you know, students that are on a different, that are on the spectrum of sexuality, and then for the children of color in the, in the, in the district and all those pieces and how it comes into play. And while the plan is generalized, I think that if there, I mean, for me, it's great that we're all, you know, protesting and we're all speaking our words and our feelings and our thoughts, but I think that the, the proof is in the pudding in terms of translation to, as Jonathan, as Mr. Costa said about, you know, looking at revising practices, procedures, reading curriculum so that it better addresses the reality of our student body. So it's a great start. It's wonderful. The clarity's there. The granularity's there. And now it's, all right, you know, how about, we would like to see it go, or I, I'll speak for myself, would like to see it include some of the specific issues that are addressing a high percentage of our students at times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. You know, based on that feedback as well and for the public, you know, Mr. Dur, we had a conversation this morning about this, you know, the confidential report. But I would like to be able to share with, with my fellow committee colleagues and the public, you know, some of the, the topics that we're looking to address before the school year. When I mentioned data before and transparency and that accountability, a lot of that is emanating as we're looking at cultural proficiency across the district as we are listening and learning from the Black Lives Matter movement for LGBTQ+ and from all of our, our community members. One of the things that I'd like to share with the committee and the public is what really stands out when we were just touching base on this report today is that it's not simply about our security department, but how our district has a clear and consistent vision for what a safe and vibrant learning environment is. And that you may have all of the proper training for implicit bias, trauma-informed care, behavioral threat assessment, HR practices for your security team, and I know that you're striving to attain those goals. But I think the stark realization, and all of us could realize this as we've learned across society, if we don't have our building administrators, our central office leadership, if everyone doesn't share that same vision in what a safe learning environment means to North Penn and how we're going to attain it, well, then your department being highly trained really won't mean anything or be effective if they're not part of a larger strategy that, you know, our building leaders, our staff members, and our central administration are all on the same page. That's something I'd like to see move forward with, you know, much more frequency and clarity as we prepare for the new year.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Dur, one of the things that we discussed and perhaps we can at least touch upon that for follow-up maybe at the next meeting, you know, some of the areas that we're looking at in increasing that feedback loop from the experience of students when we talk about communication is grievance procedures. I think that's a good example of, you know, where we can further develop procedures, practices to make sure we hear from students so we can identify patterns across our buildings and address training and possibly even HR issues with certain employees. I think that also demonstrates how it's not just the security department, you know, it could also be others across a school building that we as a district need to make sure we're on the same page and making sure that we put our antenna up, so to speak, so that we hear those messages and can identify patterns where we might not be attaining the goals we set for, for ourselves.
That's a good point. And I think paired with that, you mentioned data there briefly, you know, when we're thinking about the data that we collect, how can we look at that data to see, you know, to frame that in the safe schools lens, to judge our, our safe schools environment, you know, whether that's paired with the grievance procedures that you mentioned there, we're just on stands alone to see if we can pick out any spots of improvement by looking at the data we've always gathered, but can we look at it in a different way that, that, you know, informs our safe schools goals moving forward? Great point.
Dr. Ruffo, if, I hope you don't mind me putting you on the spot, but are there areas from the central office that we can address in data collection? I know we, we have an improved incident data collection program now that we're using across the district. Are there ways that we might be able to improve our demographics collection and data, you know, across the district as well as at the building level to, to try to identify patterns where we can improve, or we should at least maybe dig a little deeper to make sure that, that we don't have some type of biases or issues that don't exactly meet our standards as a district?
Sure. So our new Infinite Campus System and the reporting system, when we put those discipline events in, we can see that demographic information. In terms of, most of those, though, those are things that are more reportable. So there could be smaller things, particularly at the elementary level, that aren't necessarily rise to the level of something that's a reportable offense through PIMS, which is the state information system. But what we're looking at at the elementary level, and some of our schools have already done this, is through school-wide positive behavior supports, a data collection tool that does really give us some nice data. In terms of how we view things by demographics, one of our main focus focuses this year has been on disproportionality. And it's particularly in discipline and looking to see if there are certain groups or populations who are disproportionately represented in discipline, and then working to address the underlying bias-based beliefs that contribute to that disproportionality. So that's definitely something that has been an ongoing effort for us and an area which we continue to seek to improve.
That's very helpful. I think really what you hit upon with the disproportionality is that, and we know what some, what the data shows, and there is disproportionality in North Penn when it comes down to discipline. I think our goal as a board is to look in the mirror and face that head-on and be able to establish, right, as you said, is it, are we effective? I'm going to borrow a word I learned from ECP, right? Are we, are we implementing with fidelity our PBIS? Or, you know, part of this, I think, comes down to also, you know, our educators, our staff, we're asking to change a culture from those who might have five, 10 or more years of a certain type of practice of how security is used or how our Safe Schools program might not be oriented that way anymore. And that's why I think some of the data that you're pointing out on the disproportionality and the incident reporting can be very helpful with us moving forward. Any other questions or insights from our committee members?
So, Mr. Casa, you know, I think this is a great conversation and springboarding off of Mr. Dor's report. I, I don't know if it can happen right now because of timing, but I think it would be helpful to identify, for the board, collectively with administration, to identify, identify specific quantitative and quantitative items that can't, that we want, like a checklist to, when this safe, this, the report's being reviewed can be included to give them, to give the administration more clarity around what we're saying. This is, again, great conversation, but what specifically would we want to see in it? And I guess it's not for this meeting call, but I think that would be really, really helpful because I think it's, I think it's needed and it sounds like we're all on the same page about what we want to see. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does. Dr. Ruffo, feel free to sign up, Dr. Bauer, for making that report at the next meeting. But yes, I, I think that, Mr. Dur, this, this aligns with what we were discussing before the pandemic and what I, what we need to recommit to as a committee in Safe Schools. Now that we have some data, how can we begin to look at that, even if it's an executive session, because it's some sensitive school safety data so that the board is more aware on a regular basis of what is happening, not to be critical of any of our staff or leadership, but so that the board is better educated in recognizing patterns and asking questions that helps have a better check and balance than us just being on cruise control with the same old culture of safety, so to speak.
Can I, and I'd like to just layer on, and again, it's not to criticize at all. I think, for me, it's a really big collaboration of people that have experience like Mr. Dor, like Dr. Bauer, like Dr. Ruffo, 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 sorry, Jenna. I think that would be really helpful. So it's a collaboration and not an analysis by the board that we work together to figure this out, bringing in collectively the different expertise experiences the board members have, and of course, recognizing the huge amount of experience our administration has.
Dr. Lewis Campbell, do you have any closing thoughts, insights, or questions before we head to public comment?
No, I don't. I like what I'm hearing. I'm, I'm hopeful for the future in terms of what we're looking for and what the administration is bringing forth. So I think we're headed in the right direction, and I'd like us to stay that way. I'd like parents to feel confident about putting their kids in our school district and seeing what we're doing to ensure the safety of all students in all aspects. So I think it's a good discussion, and I'm interested in helping in any way that I can.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell. And also share with the committee, we might have touched upon this at other times separately. We are working together with the Policy Committee and Ms. Gee to make sure that there is some direct outreach with student groups, those who might have recently, recently graduated or some representatives across the student body to make sure that they have their input and we're inclusive of their questions and also their goals as we begin to redefine what a culture of safety means across North Penn. So looking forward to those next steps. Any closing questions, thoughts, or remarks? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dur, for that update. It's truly appreciated. Your, your service to the community is just commendable, and we wouldn't be this far without you. Thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Gilmer, do we have anyone in the waiting room for public comment?
We do. Hand is raised. So if you want to read your disclaimer, then we can read into public comment.
Very grateful for that. I just have to find it again. Here we go. A little minute. Guidelines for addressing the committee. Okay. Individuals attending this meeting virtually and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it's necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board raise their hand electronically, thank you, and state their name and address. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board. The board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Thank you very much. Who do we have to speak?
First up is John Siegler. Mr. Siegler, I am allowing you to talk. So as soon as you're ready, you can unmute your mic and you can begin. Just want to make sure, Mr. Siegler, you've unmuted your mic. Your, your hand is up if you do not desire to talk. If you could just let us know. There he goes. The mic is open. I'm not sure, Mr. Siegler, if you're able to get your microphone working there. All right. I'm not sure what's going on there. I'm going to go ahead and unmute or mute you for a second. And then if there are any other hands, we'll see if we can come back to Mr. Siegler. If there's anyone else who'd like to make public comment tonight, just raise that blue hand in the bottom of your interface there. It'll show up here, and I can open your mic to allow you to make public comment tonight. Not seeing any other hands. All right, Mr. Siegler, we're going to try this again. So here we go. I'm going to hit, you're allowed to talk. If you unmute your mic, you can begin to make comment.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Got you now, Mr. Siegler. There you go.
Sorry about that.
No, you're okay.
Too many, too many devices going at the same time. So I basically just wanted to say that, you know, we're all on a journey. And I say we, I don't mean just the people in the committee. We're all on a journey here to understand things, learning a lot of information about some of us are on this journey more willingly than others, but we're all on a journey and it's stressful for everyone. My, my two questions have to do with kind of that issue. Number one is, what, what's the plan? Is there a plan to provide implicit bias training to the security staff? And also, is there any plan to provide a safe place for school staff to go when they're frustrated or they feel confused about changes in policies and procedures that they don't understand or they feel frustrated because it's creating cognitive distance for them? I think it's unreasonable to expect that if we move at anywhere close to the pace that some of us want to move, that folks, a lot of folks aren't going to be uncomfortable. And I think we want to address that as proactively as we can because a lot of the folks who are uncomfortable are highly trained, very capable, well-meaning people. And I don't think we could have really want to, could afford to lose any of them if we can, if we can avoid it. So that's my only comment, my only questions.
Dr. Siegler, thank you very much. You are, you're like the fifth Beatle on this committee. So appreciate the insight. Yeah. I'm dating myself a bit, but appreciate those insights. Mr. Dur, if you had a brief response, I thank you, Dr. Siegler, for being part of this. We don't typically answer during public comment, but being a committee, I think it's appropriate if the implicit bias answer, if that's possible. Then, Dr. Ruffo, I'll defer to you if you have a comment or not, understanding that we can certainly have some follow-up with Dr. Siegler outside of this.
Yeah, certainly. I can certainly answer the first part or the first question about implicit bias training for security officers. As I believe implicit bias training is on the roadmap for all employees and it's been underway for, for over a year. Our security officers have not been involved yet in implicit bias training, but my expectation would be that as part of the larger district effort, as we move into the fall, they will all receive that, that same implicit bias training.
Mr. Dur, and it was my understanding, though, that over the closure, did the security staff also participate in some cultural proficiency? Mr. Dur, and it was my understanding though that over the closure, did the security staff also participate in some cultural proficiency trainings?
Yes, some of them were involved in the cultural proficiency groups that did take place virtually. Thank you for raising that point.
Right. So during our closure, we did do quite a bit of work on cultural proficiency with our support staff. So we utilized that time that we had available to get more people involved in terms of what our cultural proficiency efforts are. And in regards to Mr. Siegler's other question about individuals who may be experiencing cognitive dissonance or aren't quite comfortable with where they're at on the journey. One of the things that we do build into some of our, our trainings is the idea, and we use Glenn Singleton's work of courageous conversations that to expect and accept non-closure. That wouldn't it be nice if we had an answer to all of this and there was this epiphany where all of a sudden we kind of understood what we could do to be more culturally proficient or anti-racist, but that's just not the case. It's an ongoing journey. So in terms of moving forward, we certainly have efforts on the horizon to expand those trainings as we move into next year. Since 2018, we really have done a lot of work in this regard, but it's something that, you know, continues to be a need and a priority for us.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo and Mr. Dur. And so those are the type of metrics that, you know, this committee would like to see as we move forward is that understanding that all security staff have been trained in implicit bias or whatever it is that might be identified, you know, that HR roadmap to meet the goals that, that we have set. So appreciate your candor, Mr. Dur, in, in explaining that. And thanks for that additional information, Dr. Ruffo. Any other questions or comments from the committee before we gavel out? I'll take that as no additional items. Our next safety meeting, school, Safe Schools Committee meeting is going to be on Monday, July 27th at 6:00 PM. We're still playing to be virtual at that time. Do we have a motion to adjourn? This meeting is adjourned for those who are along for the facilities and operations. We'll begin in just, let's go with 6:36. So we'll gavel in at, at that time. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.